Oh, all right, we're live. All right, I'll call this Board of Selectments meeting to order for Thursday, June 4th. Roll call, we have Eric Gasperini, Pam Alley. Pam Alley, present.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, here. I'm sorry.
And Phil Crossman. No, you're on mute.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, Jake Thompson and Donald Poole are absent. Approve agenda, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley. Eric Gasperini votes yes. Pam Alley?
Yes.
Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Okay, and to the only item on the agenda, COVID-19 June letter.
I'll just go over, I shared earlier this week, a couple of different versions of June letter that could be going out. Two with slightly different tones. Have had three, kind of in a summary here on the screen, three coffee hours, if you will, virtual coffee hours with some of the businesses out here, along with Gabe from our team, as well as Sue with the Chamber of Commerce. So some of the things that came out of that, the most recent meeting, which was yesterday, were some of the concerns, they highlighted the biggest one of, that of the conflict that the letters kind of posed with their business, you know, and not encouraging or discouraging people to come to Vinyl Haven, and the businesses having great concern for their ability to make the money they need to sustain their businesses, as well as the concerns that they also have for, I mean, they did share the health and safety of their employees. They've experienced a few visitor encounters in which, you know, one of them might not have been wearing a mask, and just kind of noted that it kind of puts the staff in sometimes awkward positions to ask for those customers to, you know, wear their face coverings. One of them also noted, mentioned, they had a service provider come out from the mainland to do work, wasn't wearing a mask, but they did follow up with the employer and expressed that concern that they had. And as I mentioned, going to the letters that have gone out, the most of them that were on the call were hoping for a more encouraging or welcoming message for the seasonal residents. Again, recognizing the important role that they play in the community in so many different ways. And then to balance that is the, what we've been here at the state level too, is, you know, that concern for public health, that which the public health team brings forward that we've been working on. So, you know, people keep asking, is the coast clear? Is it safe to come out? We've heard this, you know, isn't it, can't we do that? We have to quarantine, we understand, but can't we just go to the quarry or go to the park? You know, so the coast isn't clear. You know, it's still a, you know, highly transmittable virus. The medical center, with the, with the people that are up there working and as passionate and competent as they are, you know, we know that we're limited with the clinic. EMS crews are dedicated but small as well, and we're always at the mercy of other means to transport people off island and any day, let alone the possibility of increased risk for community transmission of COVID-19. And so that just kind of leaves us with how do we, how do we manage that with those resources that we have? You know, so some of the tone for the, the June letter, just, we just wanted to have, you have the opportunity to, you know, hear or ask questions of some of the health team. Jen and Mark are on as well. But for people to kind of hear that both sides of, of the concern that the community is sharing, and just to have a good discussion about that before we send a letter out with whatever tone the board feels is most appropriate. Any thoughts, questions? Statements?
Well, the, the letter says that nothing has changed. In fact, in fact, one thing has changed, and that is that we have all learned new means and new methods and new skills about how to cope effectively with this pandemic and to do so habitually and faithfully. I think that's changed, and I think that that's made a big difference. And I hope that we can persuade ourselves to acknowledge the economic dependency that at least 50% of the community has on, in particular, our seasonal residents that spend as much time and as much money as they do here in town. And we can, as Carver says in their letter, find a way to protect our community without discouraging the business that we all need to survive. And I think that this letter, the second letter, is certainly an improvement over the first one. I don't mean to diminish the concerns of the health team, certainly. They're doing exactly what they're expected to do and doing it well. But we, I think, need to look at the bigger picture and find a way to accommodate not only their concerns and the reality of this pandemic, but the reality of our dependency economically on these people.
Well, I don't think anybody disagrees with that, Phil. But on the other hand, let's look at it from, um, the point of view that if we are more encouraging, it's not that people are unwelcome, that's, I, I feel badly for the, for our friends who think they are unwelcome here. That's absolutely not the case, and I'm sure all of you guys will agree. But if, what happens if we do say, okay, yeah, let's, we are more welcoming, or more, not welcoming, but, you know, come on, oh, what happens if we do start to see increased cases from visitors from away? How do you shut it down? How do you, what, what do you do to go back to saying, okay, no, it's not working? I mean, we need, don't you think that might be part of it too?
Yeah, I think that's a, a real concern. Back to your original point, so you said that we haven't told them that they're not welcome, but we in fact have told them quite specifically that they're not welcome. We asked them in our first letter not to come and to take into consideration the town's limited resources and the danger they presented to us coming from areas of the country where the COVID is more pronounced. So this is in fact a change. We are in fact, or I am anyway, proposing that we make them feel that it is possible for them to come rather than discouraging them or telling them that they're not welcome, which is what we were saying, I mean, we were saying it politely certainly, and they were all, most of them reasonable and accommodating. But I think we have to find a way to do this while acknowledging that economic dependency. And I think the fact that we are so much more capable now than we were two months ago because we've learned all the skills and habits that are necessary to protect our health, it's much more possible now than it was then.
Well, I'd like to hear from Jen or... I, I don't know if Jen's on, but I'd like to hear.
Hi. Yeah. Can I talk? I don't know.
Yes.
Sorry. Hi. Yeah, I mean, Phil, I, I totally understand what you're saying and, you know, in talking to people in town, my, you know, our goal isn't to be unwelcoming, but I do worry about what happens, especially in the fall. I mean, we could have a couple of months of summer that, that seemed pretty good, and then a fall that turns out pretty poorly. There have been a couple of people who have talked about, you know, we have talked about our resources and how they're sort of stretched thin. And people have sort of asked the question, well, why, what does that mean? Because, you know, every other summer, we take on this massive increase in population, which is true. We're in a little bit of a different situation. We're down a medical provider, which we're working on. Our EMT crew is very small right now. But, you know, the other thing that's happened is that even though we may have had less people around, there's been a lot of work going on. So I do think the reality is that we're stretched thin. So, I mean, I'm all for finding a balance, and, and I want to be able to find a balance. I'm just having a hard time putting that together, I guess.
You know, I, I, I inserted, I drafted some first initial language to try to make that most recent letter more accommodating while still being safe. And for example, said that as businesses begin to safely reopen, one thing has changed. We here on the island, as elsewhere, have learned new habits, ways of effectively coping with this virus. And while we know that the best way to prevent the virus is to stay home and avoid contact, we must also acknowledge our economic dependency, in particular, on the commerce we engage in with our regular seasonal visitors who own property and love this place as much as we do. And then continue with the language that was expressed in the letter about the issues that are concerning to us all.
Yeah. Um, I, I didn't, I, I don't know where the, that was, but I, I haven't looked at that yet, Phil, but thanks for, thanks for that. I haven't seen that yet.
I haven't sent it out to anyone.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks. Yeah, I mean, I don't, Mark and Andy, if you guys want to weigh in, I mean, I don't know, it's just, it's a tough situation. I mean, like I said to Pam the other day, I, I feel like I'm up at night, you know, thinking about this letter because I don't want it to sound unwelcoming. But at the same time, I'm, I, you know, the reality is that even though we have learned new ways of operating, I am worried about a big influx of people from different places.
Yeah, we talked about a gap too. I mean, the, the letter that many are kind of awaiting are taxpayers and seasonal residents in, might only be one part of a household or a family's home that comes out here. And, you know, that group, I think, is, is receptive. And for those that haven't come out yet are the ones that we probably can count on the most to be as cautious as possible while here. You know, and then we talk about the other group, which we're not quite sure the best way to reach still. So, I mean, that, I mean, education, there's ways that we can, to Phil's point, you know, try and educate. I mean, if folks here are doing what should be done based on the guidelines and what the state's asked and what we've asked, that's great. But I think a concern is how do we reach those that aren't seasonal residents and aren't year-round residents that haven't seen these things yet? And will that behavior of those coming for shorter periods of time or visiting those of us here already do those things too? So we spent quite a bit of time talking about how do we, you know, capturing that group of people. You know, different islands have different ways of trying to reach others. You know, again, we were in contact with other businesses and presumably they can help push messages too. But I think the behavior of others is something that is largely out of our control without any sort of guidance or enforcement from, you know, law enforcement to help beyond what we can put out at for signage and letters and Facebook posts. So I think that's been weighing on us as a concern.
When you talk about the, the other group, Andy, you're talking about day trippers and people like that?
Yeah.
Well, this letter, go ahead, Pam.
Well, I was just reading, if you are coming to the island from an area in Maine with community spread, it is recommended you quarantine for 14 days. Now, hotspots and areas of community transmission within the state, while we might be able to know where those places are, how, how are you going to detect the people, the overnighters or the day trippers or whoever that might be coming from those places? We have no way to control that day traffic at all.
So the state is...
We don't, but on the other hand, we're not addressing those people. We're, we're sending this...
Well, it says right here in this letter that is proposed, that that's one of, the current executive order only mandates a 14-day quarantine. However, for the safety of the community, the public health team strongly recommends those traveling from hotspots and areas of community transmission within the state quarantine for 14 days upon arrival to the island. So how is that going to help for people just coming out for the day? We don't know where, if they're coming from hotspots or, you know. I just don't know how it's, I just don't know, there's no, there's no way to really control the whole thing.
I'm looking at a different letter.
Oh, I don't know, this is the one that Andy gave me yesterday.
Yeah, there's two different letters.
He gave me the one from May 9th, and then the one that, other one you gave me is community guidelines, June letter supplement.
I'm looking at the one that, we know that businesses need customers, nonprofits, so on and so forth. First line.
No, this is, Andy, you copied this one for me. He copied it for me yesterday.
I think it's also important for us to remember that because there's diminished ridership on the ferry boat, you know, our, you know, limited cabin capacity. You know, that's going to, you know, that's important to remember that if islanders can't get back and forth, you know, easily, maybe it's not that great to encourage people from away to come as well. You know, the Curtis and the Philbrook are limiting 10, 10 walk-on passengers. It's not very many people.
Yeah, what would you do in that case if you were trying to come home on the last ferry because you'd had an appointment?
Be first to run.
Yeah, I mean, I said, well, I'm sorry, before you're going to stay. It's like, but I don't have anywhere to stay. What do you do about that?
Well, that's a real concern, but I, I think we have to balance the reality of things like that, which will probably change as time goes by. Those numbers will probably change, more people will probably be allowed as they have been elsewhere. But certainly, we don't know that that's the case, and it's a real concern. But we have to balance, there are all sorts of real concerns. The pandemic is a real concern. The logistics that you just talked about are a real concern. But the economic dependency is certainly a real concern. And this letter that is, who are the recipients of this letter, Andy?
So in the, the last two months, we've had two different versions of a monthly letter go out. And one version would go to an audience of the tax mailing list, the tax bill list, for those that aren't Vinyl Haven addresses. Surprisingly, there's quite a few in Maine. And then we would usually put another letter out through the Everydoor Direct Mail, sharing both online, but the Everydoor Direct Mail was slightly different and geared towards those that are already here. You know, here's, here are the guidelines, and here's, here's what you can look to do. So there were, there were two different versions, two different letters going out each of those months.
So the primary recipients we're talking about are, in fact, the seasonal residents and people who have post office boxes here. And it's those people that we are, that I propose we be a little more welcoming to because they contribute so significantly to the economic health of 50% of our businesses. And I think there's a way to balance the real concerns that we have about this pandemic with that dependency.
So what do you think, what are your ideas then, Phil?
Well, this letter right now...
I'm sorry?
I thought I heard somebody else say something. Okay. This letter right now starts out by saying, we know that businesses need customers, nonprofits need events and fundraisers, families need to be with each other, and those of you with seasonal homes want to return and rejoin your community for the summer. That's what it says now. I propose that we say, instead of, the next sentence said, nothing has changed. In fact, I suggest we say that as businesses begin to safely reopen, because they are, one thing has changed. We here on the island, as elsewhere, have learned new habits, ways of effectively coping with this virus. And then go on to acknowledge the economic dependency while at the same time acknowledging the real health concerns that our health team has. But make it clear, I think by inference, that they, those seasonal residents are welcome to return for the summer, and we expect them to take all the necessary precautions that we all are expected to take.
I mean, we're not telling people to stay away. We're telling them they have to follow the state guidelines, quarantine for two weeks. Some of these older people coming from California might not want to drive all the way here or fly through Boston or New York. That's a hotspot. So, I mean, we can't really tell them to, you know, come out here at the, just because they have a house here. I mean, isn't it kind of up to them if they want to come or not?
Well, of course.
Yeah, it's, it's always been allowed to come back to your property, your property. It's just the tone of the letters. And for those that, you know, are waiting and we're waiting to see, have out of respect for the town, Jen, the selectmen, the team, and the community members chosen not to come. And so I think for those in that position, you know, that's the challenging spot they've, they've been putting in. But it's always been a recommendation or a request, not an order. I mean, can, can we just say, if you're, if you're planning on coming for more than two weeks, you're welcome to come. If you're planning on being here for two days, you might as well stay where you are.
Yeah, and perhaps the letter doesn't have to say, you know, please don't come, or nothing's changed. Just really point out the reality that this is not going to be the summer that they're used to out here. You know, this, these businesses run in small buildings and have, you know, are running with obviously limited capacity now. Ferry, getting on the ferry, it's going to be more challenging. And, you know, we, you're required to quarantine by the state if you do come out here for 14 days. So don't say, maybe you don't, you don't have to say, don't come, but, or please don't come, but say, if you really want to come, you can, but you're probably not going to have a very good time.
No, I wouldn't go far to say that.
You're going to have a horrible time when you come.
I don't know if you want me to write that.
But I think, I mean, Jake is right. Jake said, Jake said, if you're coming for two days, there's, thinking about coming for two days, there's no point in coming. But we're, my concern and the concern of the business community that I'm trying to represent here is that the people who come and spend 60 or 90 days every year are welcome to come and continue to enjoy themselves, providing they abide with the parameters that we all expect one another to abide by, 14-days quarantine, wearing face masks, staying six feet apart, all those things. But we don't have to address ourselves, I don't think, to people who are planning to come here and spend two days because those aren't the people that I'm concerned with at tonight's meeting anyway.
You can't really get in touch with them anyway.
Yeah, I mean, these letters are going out to seasonal residents and post office box holders. These are precisely the people that I'm talking about. And we have to, we have, we're, we're trying to turn the tide here because our initial response a couple of months ago was in fact discouraging. And it was supposed to be discouraging. I wrote it. I know it was supposed to be discouraging. We didn't want anyone to come, and with good reason. But now we've learned new ways of coping, new ways of adapting while still protecting ourselves and acknowledging the concerns of people like our public health team.
Andy, can you bring up one of the letters or maybe a second letter up on the screen, please?
Yeah, just give me a, give me one second.
I really do feel that the majority of our friends, our seasonal friends are very aware of what is expected of them. I don't think that they will come to the island and not be respectful of what is, what they, of us or what they need to do. I do feel bad that they, if they feel unwelcome, but I think a lot of them really want to, they want to, to do what, what is best, but they don't want people on the island to be, to be disres... to not respect them for coming. I think that's another concern. And that's a different thing than feeling, maybe it's not, but one person said to me, I don't feel unwelcome, but I'm afraid if I, if we came, I would, that some island people would not respect us for coming. They would, you know, that's a whole different way of feeling, I guess, but...
Pam, I, I just quickly, I wanted to say, I, I think you're right. I mean, I, I do still think that the majority of people who come here for the summer and who have been coming here, you know, they're the ones who are listening and, and I, you know, we want to think that they're going to do what has to be done. I think that part of the reason that I was anxious, and I think the public health team too, is because over the past few weeks, we have seen people coming. And, you know, we've all been a little bit surprised by how lax some of them have been. And I mean, I'm not saying everybody, and I, I'm still hopeful that the majority is going to be, you know, listening and adhering, but I, I, I just worry, that's all. I just, I just feel like the, you know, summer in Vinyl Haven is such a time for people to get together. And, you know, like Eric said, this is going to be such a different summer. And I think that's why my tone has been so cautious, because I just, I just worry about, about a summer like that and how people are going to be able to handle it.
And as well you should, because it all, it's going to fall on your shoulders.
Yeah, I'm, I'm grateful that you feel as concerned as you do, Jen, because it's precisely where you want to be. But I also agree with Pam about the attitude of these people who, for instance, the people who own Bridgeway called me up two months ago when they got the first letter and said, we're really concerned about whether we present a health threat to the island, and what do you think? And I said, well, at the time, and at the time, I agreed that they did present a health threat and suggested that they stay away. And they called me back a week later and said, okay, we're not coming because we don't want to endanger the community. And the very same day, I got a call from a seasonal resident who comes every year. He said exactly the same thing, and he decided not to come because he, not because he didn't feel welcome, but because he knew that he presented a threat. And I feel, as I've said several times now, that now that two months have gone by, we've learned coping mechanisms effectively. And while the concerns expressed in the letter from the public health team are legitimate, completely legitimate and real, I think we need to find some middle ground so that we can accommodate the businesses that desperately, at this point, need support.
I think a problem with a lot of people is going to, going to be their attitudes. That all we've been doing from where we came from is staying home and getting groceries delivered. So why do we have to quarantine? We've already been in quarantine. I mean, I can see that being a huge issue. When people come up here, they're, they're going to think that it's not as big a deal because they've already quarantined where they're from, they haven't gotten sick. So they don't feel they should have to, but they're still traveling to their grocery store where there's a lot more virus, you know, load or whatever you call it. But, I mean, they're going to... you know, load or whatever you call it. But, I mean, they're going to come up here and do seven days and say, oh, we feel fine. We're going to go out and not do the whole 14 days is the way I look at it. So, I mean, even, even, there's no way to keep those people off the island. So, I, I don't see how we can encourage people to come out here. The ones that are going to come out here, I think are already planning on it. I'm, the people that don't want to have a tree cut down across their yard are going to stay away anyway, I think. I mean, I don't know how we can change their minds.
I think we absolutely can. And I don't think for a minute that there are many people out there, seasonal visitors, who think they're going to get that kind of reception. I think they recognize that that was unusual. But, you know, the, I, I, I'm, I've, there are all kinds of people who've come here already. And I can name several right off the top of my head that have just emerged from 14 days because they recognize 14 days is what works, not seven, not 13, 14. And they have quarantined faithfully. And I think there are going to be some, as Jake says, who may not respect that requisite. But there are all kinds of exceptions and things we need to concern ourselves. People go to mainland every day here from Vinyl Haven, expose themselves to who knows what, and then come back that night and go to the post office, go to the bank, or the grocery store. There are people among us and there are people among them who are less cautious than they ought to be.
Phil, I, I think you're right. And I think one of the other things that I've been concerned about and the public health team is concerned about is, you know, there's no real way to, you know, I hate to use the word police it, but, you know, when, when people ask the governor, you know, how, how are you going to be able to make sure people are doing what they're supposed to be? You know, her answer was sort of local law enforcement, public health officer. And, you know, we sort of laughed about me standing down there with a book of summons isn't a big hat that I could, you know, make people do what they're supposed to do. But I think that's one of our concerns, and I don't know that there is a way for us to do that.
I don't think there is. I think we have to have faith in one another, just like we do now. We have faith in one, in one another, using these skills that we've acquired. And most of us do. Most of us do. Most of us very faithful. And I have no question about what most of our seasonal residents will be equally faithful.
I don't, I don't share that. I don't share that sentiment. I, I don't believe that most of the people coming from away are going to do what they're supposed to do because they can come here, do whatever they feel like they do, because that's usually what they want to do. And then if the virus gets out here and there's such a big bunch of cases, they can just pick up and leave. And then we're left to deal with it. So, I don't disagree that we have to be, we have to try to find a balance where we can get our businesses back to some sort of normalcy. But I just, I just don't have the faith in people right now to, to say that. I'm sorry.
And I think, I think there's a big difference between the people who are seasonal residents here, Donald,
who live here for 60 or 90 days every summer and the people who come and rent for a week. I think there's a big difference.
There's people here right, right now, who, who, who come here every year and are not following the quarantine guidelines.
There are people here who live here year round who are not following the quarantine guidelines.
That's true.
Among every population.
Yeah, but that's beside, I mean, it's not beside the point, but even still, we're talking about people coming for the summer or whatever. We're not, I don't think we need to get into an argument over who's in and who's out. But I, I feel we really don't have a lot of sway in what folks are going to want to do. With they, if they want to come here, they're going to come.
That's, I also agree with that. And as was pointed out, there's not much we can do on policing it, you know? Even if we had someone down at the ferry checking everybody that they came off, okay, where are you coming from? All right, well, you have to go to your house and stay there for two weeks. We're not going to be able to go monitor those people for two weeks. So it's, it's kind of out of our hands anyway. And we, I guess we do have to just rely on, you know, that people are going to do the right thing and hope for the best. Because I, I understand, you know, summer, summertime is a big, it's the money maker for the, you know, for the majority of our businesses downtown. So it, we need to have, we need to have people here for that. And I, I get that. So it's, I'm just, I'm very concerned with a lot of things. And it's, it's just difficult to find the right solution for what is obviously a difficult problem for everyone.
Yeah, but let, let's, I agree with all that, except that when, what Pam said a minute ago was, if people are gonna, if people want to come, they'll come. And DW, you agreed with her. In fact, that's not the case. People who want to come have already, in large numbers, said, we're not coming because the town expressed such concern two months ago. It was a reasonable thing for the town to do, and it was a responsible thing for those people to do when they said, we're not coming, even though we very much want to. The fact is, the people who want to come are not necessarily going to come anyway. Many of them are considerate of our concerns.
Well, that's fine. I mean, if, if, I agree, if we want to change, I agree with what you're trying to say, Phil, that feel we should put out a different message now as opposed to what was provided two months ago. And I agree, things have, have changed somewhat. So if we need to change the tone, that's fine. It doesn't mean those people are automatically going to now, oh, it's okay for us to come. Like, it's still going to be their decision. So.
That's right.
Again, changing the tone of the letter, that's fine, but it's not going to just, I don't think it's just going to fix all of our woes just because we say, yep, everyone come on and the floodgates are going to open, so.
Changing, changing the tone of the letter is precisely what I propose to do because it's, it's not going to make the difference between success and failure. It's going to make the difference between survival and failure.
So I'd like, so I'd like to go back to the point I made earlier and, you know, probably tone it down. But, um, don't say, you know, please don't come, but just, again, you know, remind them it's not going to be the summer they're used to. And this is what, you know, the state guidelines are, and this is also what we're asking you to do as well. You know, we have plenty of seasonal residents that live in Maine, you know, they're from southern Maine, and they're in hotspots right now. That, you know, they're not required by the governor's order to quarantine when they come here. They still should. If I went to Portland tomorrow for, you know, if I absolutely had to go to Portland, when I came back here, I would quarantine for 14 days. But, you know, I wouldn't be required by law to do so. It would just be the right thing to do. So, you know, back to the point of, you know, don't say, please don't come, but just really make sure that everybody who gets the letter truly understands, you know, where they're going to be coming, what they're going to be coming to.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, it's important for us to make that very clear that we still want people to come, but it's, it's obviously not going to be the same as past years because of the pandemic. And these are the steps we let people to take to ensure that while they are here, that they're safe and that everyone else is safe.
As far as I'm concerned, we're on the exactly the same page with what you just said, Donald.
Okay, great.
I mean, nothing, nothing's changed over the winter. There's, there's no Grappa, there's no Instacart. It's all the same vinyl even they remember. I mean, just because there's a pandemic, there hasn't been a whole slew of new businesses started out here. I mean, it's still not going to be easy to get their groceries. And, I mean, they're not supposed to go pick up food downtown for two weeks. So, they're going to have to rely on what they bring with them. I think that should be noted in the letter. I, I saw it was in there, but, I mean, that should stay in there.
Yeah, that's, that's a very important point. They need to make sure that they're stocked for those two weeks because they're not supposed to leave their property.
And of course, many of the stores here can, can help accommodate that. I know early on, what was one of the concerns, one of our letters had was, you know, it came right from the CDC briefing for folks traveling out of state. It was recommended they bring with them what they need for 14 days. And of course, we've heard from some of our, our businesses saying they have the supply, they can, they can supply them. And we have to, you know, curbside pickup and to-go, you know, delivery services. So, I just want to throw that out there, that, that the.
Yes, but if they're supposed to stay on their property for two weeks, how are they supposed to do curbside? That's kind of sending them a bad message saying, oh, you can come down and pick up your stuff curbside, but you're supposed to stay on your property for two weeks? I mean, how, I mean, it should say, these places will deliver. That's all, that's all the resources you have for these two weeks when you get out here. Whichever place is deliver, that's it.
Yeah, that's a mixed message to, to have curbside, absolutely. Yeah. Because if they're not supposed to leave, which they aren't, they wouldn't, curbside wouldn't be doing them any good, so.
I agree. I think our letter just has to be, make it clear that they are welcome to come, but they have to conform with the parameters that we have established and that all of us have to conform with. And that includes all the things you just said.
I don't know if I'm in favor of actually explicitly saying, you're welcome to come. Just, you know, we probably, you know, maybe we don't need to say, please do not come.
If we make it clear that these are the precautions and the parameters within which you have to live your life when you get here, that's clear enough. I agree. We don't have to say, you're welcome to come. The implication is, if you own property here and you want to come, then these are the requirements.
Does anyone have any objections to that?
No, I was just, oh, sorry.
I mean, I guess I, I'm just concerned as the one who's signing the letter. And, you know, I just, I can, we can work on a new letter and, and sort of what we're, what we've all talked about. But I also, I, I guess I just, I don't know if Mark and Andy are still there. I guess Andy is. I don't know if Mark is. But I, I just want to make sure that I feel comfortable with what it says. And I agree that I don't think, I agree with Eric, that I don't feel comfortable writing a letter that just explicitly says, you know, we welcome you all, please come. I mean, I think that, I just, I don't feel comfortable saying that. I think that we can talk about the requirements that need to happen and talk about, like Phil said, talk about the things that have changed for the better, you know, how we've learned to sort of work in this, you know, in this new reality. But, I don't know, I'm just, I have to sign it. So I guess I have to start working on it.
I don't know if you have to sign it, Jen. I think, you know, maybe the letter should come from the board of select, selectmen instead. I mean, I'm, I'm open to talk about any of that, but, you know, I do have, you know, the concerns that's been spoken. I really haven't talked much, but, you know, especially with the, you know, the summer people that come. One of our big concerns and my concerns is, you know, those all have guests that always come up every weekend or every week. And it's, it's having those people make sure that they're abiding by it, even if they're coming for a couple of days, which is going to be another tough sell for those people that visit our seasonal residence.
And on that point, it also means that if somebody, if they have a visitor that comes for a weekend, if they, you know, that also means that those visitors need to quarantine. And then those people in the house then have to quarantine for another 14 days.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that, that, that would make no sense to invite friends up for a weekend because then you're back to square one yourself.
I know, we've all, we've all worked very hard on doing, you know, putting our thoughts into this. And we all understand very much how hard this is for our island businesses. And, and I guess, you know, coming from, you got to see it as kind of two sides and bringing both sides to you guys to kind of find the middle ground as the elected officials is, you know, us as a public health team are going to be very well weighted heavily on being extra precautious or just being precautious, if you will, and looking at the big picture of what if this does happen and what are the ways we can prevent this from happening? And keeping our numbers down on the island, we're already very busy during the summertime with EMS and medical calls. So we, if we add again another 2,000 or 3,000 people and then throw up, you know, COVID in the middle of it, what does that look like? So, it's very challenging. I, you know, it's, it's, it's very tough. And, you know, there, there's got to be a middle ground there somewhere, and I hope we can find it, so.
I'm sure we can.
I was going to suggest what Mark just did, that, you know, perhaps the letter should come from the board of selectmen.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
You know, we can, the five of us can put our signatures on it.
And Jen, I certainly don't want you to lose any more sleep because you've worked too hard to, you can't afford to lose sleep.
Yes, we need you well rested.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to step on your toes either. I don't, I mean, if you want to write the letter, I mean, I, I guess I'd ask the select board to give you the opportunity to do it. But I just want to take you kind of off the hook for this kind of, I know where, I know we're on kind of different ends of, of the spectrum or we're on one far end of the spectrum, I should say, is looking at the public health thing. So, but ask the board to at least consider, ask her if she wants to, or do that before I spoke, before I speak for her.
No, I mean, I understand, Mark. I, I, it's just, it's a hard position.
Well, I think if, if the board wants to sign the letter, that's fine with me. But I, would you, Jen, want to just have a paragraph in there and, and say what, how, what you, what you guys feel, what the EMS or you yourself as public, you know, as this health officer? Because you do have that one paragraph, you know, is, is my job as the Vinyl Haven's public health officer? I mean, you could maybe revise that somehow and, you know, I don't know, just thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't we, let's, if we give the final product to Jen, and she's on board with it, then we can all sign it. As long as there's no conflict between what Jen is comfortable with and what she's not comfortable with, we wouldn't want to send out something she wasn't comfortable with anyway.
So, to that point, you know, we're nowadays, what now, June 4th, we should, we need to do this sooner rather than later. You know, you know, if we, if it takes us another couple of days to get the letter written and then come to a consensus about its content, and then, you know, take another couple of days in the mail to get to these people, you know, it's going to be, and, you know, we won't be talking about another week before people get this letter.
Um, I just got a message from Adam Lockman. And he's saying that the governor is making changes to the quarantine likely early next week. Do you suppose maybe should we wait to see what our update is before we get the letter out?
Yeah, that might, that might make sense.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. If there are changes coming from the governor, we should obviously wait and then the letter.
He adds, this is a challenge as things evolve. Could always update it, I guess, but.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think with the public health team actually talked about that the other day. And I think that that's a tough one because I think on the one hand, we need to wait and see, you know, we want to hear what the governor says, but at the same time, we're in a unique situation. We live on an island. So, you know, just like the governor right now is saying that you need to quarantine if you're coming from out of state, we're asking people, you know, if you're coming from a hotspot in-state to quarantine. So, you know, that, there might be something that, well, the public, there might be something that the public health team would ask people to do that may be a little bit different from the governor. So, that's just something to think about.
And, and can the town do that? Can we be a little bit more stringent than what the strict, whatever the word may be?
We can, we can.
We can suggest it. We can ask.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, that's, that's basically what we're doing now anyway, because I know there's guidelines from the state. But again, how do we enforce it if someone's not following that? There's really not much we can do. It's, oh, it's, they're all going to be suggestions, in my opinion.
It sounds like if the governor is, sorry, but if the governor is going to update us next week, it sounds like we probably better wait anyway.
Well, I would suggest, this is what I would suggest, that we wait for the governor's update. Let's get a letter drafted. And then, after she comes out with whatever her new mandates are, then we can update the letter at that time.
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know, is the, is the content of the letter going to change that much? I mean, it's gonna, it's basically going to either give some flavor of how you feel people coming and going. I'm, people coming here, right? So, doesn't it seem like necessary? doesn't really necessarily have to lay out the guidelines. I think that could be laid out in the attachment that we've given updated current guidelines, like a supplemental form to, to our current letter. So I don't, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know. I think maybe the letter could start to be drafted.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, yeah, absolutely.
I think that's what Pam said. Yeah, I agree with, I agree. We should start drafting it now and then, uh, see with the governor and what makes a difference.
If we wait, if we wait for the governor, that's gonna be the July letter.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever she does, whatever she does for an update is gonna be, what's gonna happen June 15th or July 1st. It's not gonna take effect Monday if she talks Monday. So I think we should get this letter out, like Mark said, as soon as possible. I, I mean, I think we should listen to Jen and Mark. I mean, they're the ones that are going out there at 12 o'clock at night, transporting people around. They're using up, I mean, they have to use PPE. No matter if it's someone that they don't suspect or not, I assume. So, I mean, the more people that come out here, the less equipment they're gonna have come fall, like Jen already said. So, I mean, I realize Phil's, everyone's gonna be in hard shape come fall. Downtown people, regular town people. I mean, this sucks for everyone. It's not just summer people, island people, it's everyone it sucks for. So we just gotta get this letter out now. If the governor changes something, we'll change it in the July letter.
Well, I agree with that too. Let's do that then.
Oh, wait, so do what exactly? Which letter do we wanna send out?
Uh, assign, um, ourselves the responsibility of drafting a letter right now and having it ready to go in a day or two, once we've reached consensus, if we reach consensus.
So Phil, um, you know, we've shared, you mentioned earlier, we shared two different versions. And you had already started to change, uh, make changes to the second one. So you just wanna start with that because I mean, that's the, the biggest one that, you know, something that's mostly complete with just a couple of minor edits. Do you just wanna give us your edits and?
I'd be happy to, yeah.
Great.
Okay, I think that's great. Okay.
And then we can just communicate by email until, uh, we reach consensus or perhaps have a, yeah, till we reach consensus.
I think that would be just fine.
Yep.
Okay, we come to an agreement on that. Um, reported members is on the agenda. Does anyone have anything quickly?
But could I just add, could I just ask a question? Somebody just sent me a message and wanted to know. Um, and I think we've addressed it to some degree. What about Maine residents who own property on Final Haven? Not from a Maine hotspot. Where do we fit in? So it's pretty much they are under the same quarantine, correct?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, the way the orders are, are written, right? So there's a still state, the stay-at-home order. If you own the property, um, you're more than able to go to your property. Um, you know, as we talked before about the, the can and the should, and, and you can decide whether you should. I mean, you certainly can. You know, but again, that's all just information we're trying to relay from above.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Um, Eric, you asked if we had, uh, any of us had any input. And I just, uh, about an hour ago forwarded the email to everyone from Dave Miramont, who tells me that, that the letter we sent to, uh, the Office for Program Accountability, uh, is, is, uh, is part of a huge process now. And, uh, well, you'll all get the letter. You can take a look at it and see, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, I read the letter.
Okay, is there anything else under reported members? All right. And Phil will begin, you know, sending us out, um, a letter hopefully in the next day or so. Um, I move we adjourn. Seconded by Phil Crossman, Eric Gasp, are any votes yes? Pam Alley?
Yes.
Phil Crossman?
Yeah.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.